I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Quincy School Committee for Wednesday, October ninth, 2024, at 6:30 PM. Superintendent, roll call.
Mr. McGauley?
Present.
Present.
Mr. DeCato?
Present.
Mrs. Hubley?
Present.
Mrs. Levo?
Present.
Mrs. Perdias?
Present.
Mayor Koch?
Present.
And I'd like to take this opportunity to introduce our two new school representatives to the school committee. From Quincy High School, we have Mishdi Malavia, thank you, for your service. And from North Quincy High School, we have Abigail Lee, thank you, for your service as well. And you just have to say, "Present." Thank you.
Stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we don't have any in memoriam, but if we could just take a moment of intention for the people in Florida, keep them in our hearts and in our minds, and hope that they're safe and, you know, they get through the storm. Thank you. At this time, we have Open Forum, which is an opportunity for community input regarding the Quincy Public Schools. Community in this context is defined as a resident of the city of Quincy, a non-resident parent of a student who attends the Quincy Public Schools, or a non-resident employee of the Quincy Public Schools. After giving his or her name and address, each speaker may make a presentation of no more than three minutes to the school committee. An individual may not exchange their time or yield to others. Residents or non-community persons may submit written statements of up to 300 words to the school committee at QSCopenforum@quincypublicschools.com by 4:00 PM of the day prior to the posted school committee regular meeting. Written statements will be posted on the school committee section of the Quincy Public Schools website by noon on the day of the posted school committee regular meeting. Is there anyone here for Open Forum? Okay, great. Superintendent's report.
Good evening again, everyone. Hope everyone's doing well. The first item on tonight's superintendent's report agenda is our QPS October 1st enrollment and class size data. This data was shared with the school committee in their packets. It is a fairly lengthy document, but I do want to kind of cover some of the highlights in the document, and then, of course, answer any questions that you may have. The official October 1st enrollment number for QPS is 9,977, which is an increase of 47 students from October 1st. QPS enrolled peak last year at 10,163 students at the end of May. Again, that's 10,163 students at the end of May last year. Since October 1st, 42 students have completed registration, and another 40 students have registrations pending. So, QPS enrollment will likely reach 10,050 students within the next month. The last page of the document has a breakdown of new registrations and transferring students by level for the 2023-2024 school year to provide insight into the administrative workload related to the over 2,000 transactions into and out of the school system. So, I have to give a shout out to Central Registration, and of course, all of our secretaries in all of the schools for the massive amount of transactions that they had to do in order to get our students registered for the fall. The elementary class size average for kindergarten through grade five is very favorable at 18 students, certainly within the range of the school committee guidelines. For grades six through eight, core curriculum classes, 84.1% of classes have 24 or fewer students, the low end of school committee's class size range. The grade six cohort, as you will see, is among the largest in QPS. Grade six is very large this year, and that has led to an increase in class sizes between 25 and 28 students, particularly, as you'll see, at the Atlantic Middle School. And we are working on adding class sections to address this issue, and so that will be addressed fairly quickly. For grades nine through 12, core curriculum classes, 83.1% of classes have 25 or fewer students, a decrease of 1% over last year. Seventeen sections are above 28 students. Most are honors or advanced. And this is an area where I would like you to take particular attention. At North Quincy High School, students enrolled in two math classes, they have enrolled in two math classes to prepare for advanced work in college. These are driving class size numbers up in the math area. So, we're also looking at adding class sections to address this issue and get those numbers down. Again, that's North Quincy High School mathematics. Detailed class size information at the school level will be shared during the school improvement plan presentations in November. In March, we will present updated enrollment class size information based on February 1st data. That's where we do the red, yellow, and green presentation. That presentation will also include projections for school building capacities for the next year, and the effect, of course, on open enrollment. So, I know this is a lot of information, a lot of numbers, but our focus right now is at North Quincy and the mathematics department to get those numbers down, and we'll get those down shortly, as well as the sixth grade at Atlantic. And if you have any questions... Oh, before that, I do obviously want to thank Laura Owens for putting all of this information together and managing this and monitoring it, and keeping us updated on class sizes and areas of concern. So, between myself and Mrs. Owens, we should be able to answer any questions that you have about class size and enrollment.
Thank you. Definitely happy to hold my questions, so after we thank Laura for all she does. Couple of questions for you. I was just, so in looking through this, I was trying to note some, any discrepancies that I wanted to just inquire as to whether you guys had any knowledge as to why certain things might have been a certain way. So, on page two, knowing that when we look from one year to the next, for instance, if we look at 2023 as fifth grade, you would think that would track to 2024 at sixth grade. And I'm noticing there's about 50 more students that went from fifth to sixth, and then also, again, from ninth to 10th. Looks like there's a pretty big jump of 30, or most of the other ones are pretty, you know, standard there. Just a couple here or there. Do you have any ideas as to why that might be?
So, we have new registrations, large numbers of new registrations at both sixth and ninth grade. Particularly part of the effect on Atlantic Middle School is students from Quincy Catholic Academy at both those grade levels, you know, coming out. We are seeing more students come out of private schools for middle school now. You know, particularly, I have to say, because of some of our extracurricular offerings, too, there seems to be a lot of attention on that. But yes, there's definitely new registrations for sixth and ninth grade.
That's great to know that that might be a contributing factor. That's really great to know. And hopefully, we're, like you say, if we can be a little more proactive about that, keeping those class sizes down earlier, so that we're not having, you know, months of kids in these larger classrooms. And kind of to that point, I just sort of did a, I like how our average is, and actually, I look back historically, and historically, it seems like the percentage of classrooms that are higher than our ideal range tend to be about the same every year, but it still kind of adds up to, you know, we have 22 classes in elementary that are over 20, 75 in middle school that are over 24, and 107 classes in high school that are over 25 students. I mean, that's still a large number. That's about 200 classes that are kind of over what we really love them to be. So, I'm glad to hear about it. Atlantic, we're going to be adding some more, maybe at North, but do you kind of see that as an issue? We could, since it's kind of historically been that way, is there anything we could do to further address those?
You can definitely take a look at it, and we can address it during budget as well. Obviously, we have a fixed budget, and we allocate where we can. We have the Learning Center coming online this year. We've got a lot of staff there, but we'll certainly take a look at it and do our best to get those numbers down.
Okay. And maybe, do we know how many, I don't think we have the breakdown to which schools those classes are at, but maybe are there certain schools that we're finding that the higher class sizes are more in, or is it really kind of spread out over all of them besides Atlantic and North?
Well, we...
So, for the middle schools, Atlantic and Central typically have, you know, those are the largest schools, and they do have the bigger class sizes. Broad Meadows has very favorable class sizes, and Point Webster and Southwest have a few, have a handful of class sizes that are above 24. And sometimes that is, you know, that's sometimes a scheduling issue depending on if students are receiving English learner services or special education services, and then those students tend to be scheduled as a group.
Gotcha.
So, yeah, there's little of that. And at the high school level, there's, you know, as last year, there was a major reduction. The previous year, North Quincy High School had quite a few class sizes closer to the upper end of the limit, and so we added staff at each curriculum area. So, that has come, you know, that has come way down. But to be honest, the registrations are very difficult to predict, okay? So, a lot of people registered for school in August, right? And so, the staffing is set, the schedule is set, and then you have to register students and figure out where do they fall, you know, what types of classes would they be taking. So, it is tricky.
Right. I just sort of mean from here on out, if there's anything we can do to address. I mean, it's only October, so if there's anything we can do to address it, so...
We'll be addressing it again in March as well. We'll do the green, yellow, and red analysis, so...
Yeah. And hopefully, we can see, yeah, maybe we can have that same graph to just see if there's the same number at that point of classes, if we can try to make an impact on different interventions and stuff. Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate it. That's all I had. Thank you.
I just had a comment and a question about the out-of-district enrollment. Pretty cool that there's zero kindergarten kids, so that Learning Center is doing something for us. We're down 11 kids going out of district, which I'm sure is part of the Learning Center, too, so I'm really thrilled to see that. I have one question. The 46 12th graders, are those 12, like up to 22-year-olds?
I'm sorry, what page are you?
I'm on page three, I'm sorry. Last column, the out-of-district placements.
Yes.
So, those 46 are 18 to 22?
Twelve and above, yes.
That's what I figured. It wasn't just 12th grade. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a quick question. So, where it is very common that we do get move-ins at the change from private school, it's very common that we get move-ins at the sixth grade because that's a change in school, and going from middle school to the high school, that is very common. We hear this every year. Do we actually have more room that we can move in Atlantic to actually make more space? Is that something that's doable?
It's getting tighter and tighter.
I was gonna say, I kind of feel like we're...
Atlantic and Central are our two tighter schools. So, we're doing our very best with regard to being inventive in transforming space into classroom space. And I have to say, Paul Hines, particularly with Atlantic and other schools throughout the district, and his team have been really helpful in getting, in converting classes, space into classrooms that are beautiful spaces. So, we'll continue to do that, but certainly, it's true, Central and Atlantic are getting very tight.
And even at the high school, too.
North Quincy is very tight, yeah. Quincy High is good on space, tight, but good on space. North is very tight.
Yes. Okay. That's what I thought. Thank you.
But we're, again, Paul, we take large classrooms, we split them in half if necessary. So, Paul and his team are doing a great job in getting these classrooms ready to go for the fall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I know we're doing the exercise before the budget, and that was my question. It was about capacity and space, based on not only the current, but the pending. And then, what do the trends usually look like annually, Laura, after we get past September, in terms of enrollments? Do they settle down a little bit?
So, last year, we had more than 200 students register over the course of the school year.
School year, yes.
Yes. And I'm sorry, and also, what we're seeing in sixth grade is that very large cohort, you know, that passed through Montclair. You know, we saw at Montclair, we had over 400 students for years. You know, they had 80 fifth graders go into sixth grade. Now, Snug Harbor has got a little bit of a bulge at fifth grade that, you know, grew over time, where they have 24 students in each of their, you know, two classrooms. So, the move-ins can be anywhere, so that's what's tricky, you know?
Have we done, taken a look at the pending enrollments that you said, and are they in the Atlantic and Central district?
They're not. They're not. We talked to the principal at Atlantic almost every day. I think there's one more student pending for Atlantic right now.
That's encouraging.
And maybe one for Central.
I mean, there's only so much you can do within the footprint of a building if there are capacities. Interesting. All right. Thank you.
I just wanted to say one more thing. From my history of working at Quincy High School, I can remember one year, we had 320 kids move in and 320 kids move out, and they weren't taking the same subjects. So, you can do your very best, and still courses get crowded because somebody's coming in, and more kids need Algebra II than moved out, needed Algebra II. But there's a certain number of, is it called churn, Laura, where students are moving in and out? So, even though the numbers might be the same, it's not necessarily the same kids. And I can remember chronically having that problem, trying to fit kids into courses that they needed, because that's where they were in their other school. But there was, so it's a very difficult process when you have a churn rate that's fairly high. And we have a fairly high churn rate in the city. Just wanted to make that comment.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back when, when Atlantic was built, do you have any recollection, or do you have any idea as to what the capacity was supposed to be when it was built?
For Atlantic, yeah, probably around 300.
300?
Probably.
And now we're at?
Uh, over 600.
So, we've doubled. And we haven't made the building bigger?
No. We've been inventive with space.
I would guess that might have been higher at the time.
If I might, you finish, Coach, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Somebody recently asked me that works at North. Now, you went to North. How did you guys do it? Because our classes were, we were 450, and I said we had a lot more kids in each class. The class size is driven down, the space needs in the building. So, that's a challenge. The other thing is the educational space required today for all the other things we do, those extra spaces. That's why we have a little bit of a crunch here. Back when we were in school, there were almost 20,000 kids in the school system back in the 70s. So, we have that now, obviously. What I'd like, if I could, if we could get some stats from some comparable districts to see how they're doing, I'd love to compare to outside how we're doing versus other districts as far as the class size goes.
We can present in March, when we do all of our, basically, our predictions for the coming budget year, so.
Okay. Good. I'm all set. Coach.
I was going to continue to say, with our budget being so tight, and you would agree with that, Mayor, correct, for the upcoming year, our budget being tight?
Well, I think the budget's been very generous over the years. Upcoming year, it's a little premature to say.
Okay. I thought you had said that we were not going to add any programs. So, to add staff would be a strain, wouldn't it, on the...
Yeah. I've had conversations with the superintendent, and if there's an issue with, we got to add a teacher or two to get the class size more manageable, we'll do that and figure it out.
I was just going to say, to the mayor's point, and also, I think, about 20, 30 years ago, as we've had new schools come aboard, we didn't necessarily have the dimensional requirements for the learning spaces that we have today. So, those requirements probably require a bigger footprint for the learning spaces, and we just made the best with what we had where we were back then, you know?
Let me ask. So, in terms of class size, is there a DSE requirement?
No, that's established by the local district.
Established by us? Okay. And...
Well, a few things they allow us to do.
Yeah, which is interesting. Okay, well, I'm guessing that we're going to do a little research and figure out how to manage some of the issues that we have today.
Yes.
And then see if there's something we can do moving in the future, because this year, we're really not going to be able to make much change except for adding staff if we need it. Is that correct?
That's correct. So, we'll be focusing on North Quincy mathematics and Atlantic sixth grade, get those numbers down through additional staff and reallocation of existing staff, particularly at North. And of course, when we do our analysis in March for the next budget year, based on enrollments and predictions, including the analysis the mayor wants us to do, we can discuss it again at that time with regard to where we want to focus any additional staff to do those numbers.
Okay. And then you'll update us by the end of the year?
Yeah, absolutely. Of the current situation, yes.
Okay, great. Oh, Doug?
Just one more thing. I just want to say, this is a good problem to have, that young families are choosing Quincy Public Schools, you know? I mean, it's a dilemma that we have to manage, but to me, it's encouraging that younger families are choosing Quincy Public Schools and choosing the city of Quincy. And I think it's a tribute, you know, to the mayor and the city council, and work that the leadership team does here in Quincy Public Schools and the principals. It's great stuff, so. So, we'll have to figure out how to manage it, but it's good stuff.
Well, you know what they say, you build it, and they will come. Build a beautiful city and a great system, and they're going to want to come. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So, next?
Next is some very good news. I'm going to thank the mayor and the state delegation, and of course, Ron Mariano, regarding the Quincy Public Schools, has been selected to be a part of the United States of Reading Program. This is a state-funded, school-wide program designed to partner with teachers in Title I schools across the country, with the goal of empowering students to choose their own books, and of course, read the books they love. Over the course of the school year, students at Clifford Marshall, Lincoln Hancock, Parker, and Snug Harbor will have the opportunity to build a personal library by selecting two books five times a year from the Scholastic Library. Each student will receive a total of 10 books, along with book plates to personalize their books. Every teacher will also receive 25 books throughout the school year to build their classroom libraries, which is amazing. We are so thankful to be selected as one of the four Massachusetts communities to be a part of this program. Scholastic will be hosting a kickoff celebration on October 17th at 10:00 AM at Clifford Marshall Elementary School. You'll all be invited, of course. We hope you can attend. Award-winning author Jerry Pallotta will be there to meet with students and kick off this amazing program. And again, we hope to see you all. An invitation will be sent to you. This, either was already sent, or will be sent tomorrow morning?
I think we got it today. Yeah.
Great. So, again, it's really great, and I have to thank the mayor and his collaboration with Speaker Mariano and the state delegation for making this a reality for Quincy. So, thank you.
Can I say, I was thinking what might be a great initiative, and of course, adding something to the media center's staff or whatever, but when kids read their books, and sometimes I like to keep them, but wouldn't it be nice if they had like a free library, you know, like you could bring your books in after you read them and put them in like a free library, and then the kids can trade and bring the books home and keep them, or put them back in there? I don't know if that's something we can look at, but that might be, that might be a fun thing for the kids to have in their library, so they can trade books. And I always think about that, so that that might be something to look into. Okay.
Okay. Upcoming Quincy Public Schools and City of Quincy events. North Quincy High School and Quincy High School School Student Support Services are hosting the annual Quincy Public School College Fair for parents and students in grades 11 and 12 on Thursday, October 10th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM in the Quincy High School Gymnasium. Representatives from over 70 colleges, universities, and career and technical schools will be in attendance to share information about their degree and certificate programs. The Quincy Special Education Parent Advisory Council is hosting the annual trunk or treat event on Saturday, October 19th, from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM in the parking lot of the De Cristofaro Learning Center. Additional information on this event can be found on the, on their website at quincypac.com. That's Quincy, S-E-P-A-C dot com. Lastly, the Massachusetts Instrumental and Choral Conductors Association, MICA, will once again be hosting the statewide marching band championship finals at Veterans Memorial Stadium on Sunday, October 27th. Of course, best of luck to the Q and Q Band in Cullagod as they compete again in this competition. So, with that, that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you. In old business, we have the school committee goals. Just an update, the school committee met on Monday, October 7th, to go over our school committee goals. And we had a meeting, tried to prioritize some of the goals that we're interested in seeing us put forth, and they have not been finalized yet. We have to do a little bit of work still, so that's where we are with the school committee goals at this point. Next, in new business, we have Technology Planning and Training Program Improvement Plan. Mr. Cavalo and Mr. Pacho. Pacho? There you go. Welcome. Glad to see you have your uniforms on.
Thank you.
They engraved in the back or someplace? No?
No, they're not.
Check and see if that works. Okay.
Good evening. Dan Pacho and I are pleased to present the 2024-2025 Quincy Public Schools Technology Planning and Training Program Improvement Plan. This plan continues our commitment to enhance our classroom technology across the district in support of modern learning environments, ensuring that students, educators, and families are equipped with tools and skills necessary to succeed in the 21st century. Our initiatives emphasize critical areas such as infrastructure, infrastructure upgrades, digital learning integration, staff training, and improving home-to-school communications. We do this by collaborating with superintendent's leadership team, principal's digital learning team. We aim to deliver a strategic approach to addressing our district's technology needs, enhancing operational efficiency, and supporting student achievement. Each goal in this plan builds on past successes and targets areas for growth. On page five, we begin to reflect over the past year, we've made significant strides in enhancing our district's technology with the support of key leaders and funding sources. We've procured essential equipment such as laptops, desktops, Chromebooks, and interactive projectors. We implemented incident IQ for ticketing and assessment management, expanded Aspen features, and provided training for staff and students. Our collaboration with Quincy Access Television continues to highlight the positive community aspects of the district. We remain committed to advancing digital learning and improving home-to-school communication through consistent and accessible platforms. Now that we've highlighted some of the progress we've made, it's time to look ahead. Each goal in this plan builds on the momentum and focuses on key areas of growth to continue improving our district's technology. To walk us through the first goal in more detail, I'd like to hand it over to Dan Pacho.
Hello. Good evening. So, for Goal One, it's page seven, continuous goal, focusing on improving Aspen Student Information System usability. Our primary objective is to continually enhance the usability of Aspen Student Information System for school staff, members, including teachers, counselors, secretaries, school administration personnel. We are committed to offering training and support to ensure Aspen becomes an invaluable resource for all stakeholders. One of the new features we are implementing in Aspen this year is the online student registration process. This will help us streamline the new student registration. Goal Two, that's on page eight, that's a continuous goal, enhance the scheduling process across all grade levels. The scheduling process is of key importance in school operations. We are dedicated to refining the process. We intend to evaluate current scheduling practices and uphold transparent scheduling timelines, and ensure the timely completion for schedules for all grade levels, adhering to federal, state, and local guidelines. Goal Three, that's on page nine, continuous goal, that is elevating home-to-school communications. Transparent and accessible communication between the school and home is indispensable. We will maintain consistent, transparent, and accessible digital communication channels, including district and school websites and district social media. We will use feedback from families to enhance our digital communication strategies. I'll turn it back to Bob.
Goal Four is located on page 10. It's also a continuous goal, supporting computer-based online assessments. Computer-based assessments play a key role in education. Our team is supporting the implementation of these assessments, collaborating with various stakeholders, including the curriculum assessment and management team, IT operations, and IT technicians team. On page 11 is Goal Five. This is a continuous goal, providing technology planning and training opportunities. Equipping educators and students with digital proficiency is essential. We'll work closely with the Quincy Public Schools digital learning teams to identify training opportunities, facilitate new features of Aspen, and offer training in Google Classroom and other educational tools. Our final goal, number six on page 14, is a continuous goal, identifying funding opportunities for digital learning and classroom technology. Sustaining our technology financial support, we will seek, we will actively seek funding opportunities, including grants, partnerships, to ensure the sustained growth of our digital learning and classroom technology initiatives. Our improvement plan and goals reflect the district's ongoing commitment to integrating technology that enriches both teaching and learning. We'll build on what we've accomplished, keep pushing forward, and embrace new opportunities to ensure steady growth, steady progress, and brighter future for our students and staff. Thank you for your time, and we welcome any questions or feedback that you may have.
Anyone on the side? Questions? Mrs. Lebo.
I just want to commend you, first of all, on the great job you've done in addressing equipment needs over the years and projecting that and making sure that our old stuff gets cleaned out. Also, what you've done with Aspen is incredible in Google Grade, the assessments. I was really, really, really happy to see that. The software line is about $285,000 now, nearly increased considerably in the past 10 years.
Yes.
I can see why, though, with all the technology that we have to use. Can you tell me what GoGuardian is?
Yeah. So that's a piece of software that the teachers use in conjunction to manage, to oversee the Chromebooks, so they can actually log in and view what the students are seeing in the classroom. So it's a classroom management tool.
Oh, great, great. And my other question is, the one thing I didn't see anywhere in here is AI. And I was wondering, I know we have an acceptable use policy, but do we also have some policy, or we don't have a policy yet, but do we have some recommendations or guidelines?
Yes. Yeah, last year, we've started a team, we came up with guidelines for, within HI, for AI.
Do you think you could send us a copy of those?
Sure.
And the acceptable use policy, just so we could see it?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Great presentation. It was a pleasure to read that report.
Thank you.
Mr. Guttrow.
Thank you. Great presentation, as always. I had the AI question as well. I'm glad we're going to get that information. I have a couple of questions for you. So the beauty of COVID was that they helped subsidize a lot of our technology. What, what, and, and you know, those things are going to get old and obsolete. Is there like a five-year plan? And then when you say funding sources, are there any federal or state funding sources? Or are these just all donations from businesses? Or how do we, how do we, you know, you determine based on the age of the equipment and the volume that we have out there, how much we have to get Chromebooks in student hands and other technology? What are the funding sources and what would a plan look like? I mean, it's obviously going to be funding-dependent.
Sure. So last year, we started to replace, we, I think, we replaced 1,600 Chromebooks total, just slowly. As they started to age out, the warranties started to go on them. So that was, so if we can keep that up, that would be amazing. But again, funding sources is what it comes down to, is finding the funds to support that.
And what's your prediction? Is it 1,600 a year that we're going to have to replace?
Yes.
Because of warranties expiring and everything else. So it's really trying to track down the money to be able to do it. And in the absence of tracking down the money to meet the 1,600 demand, we, how do we manage that? We just kind of reissue some of the older ones?
Yeah, I mean,
Are beyond warranty and?
Our team definitely fixes the Chromebooks as they come in, as they break. We repair out-of-warranty ones with, use them as parts to replace other broken Chromebooks as they come.
And do you, can you, is there anything you want to say about cybersecurity? And kind of your role in cybersecurity, or how is that?
So cybersecurity falls under the city of Quincy?
Okay.
So there's, all right. I mean, we partner, we work with them.
Yeah. Just be curious about that subsequently, how we, you know, because we have a pretty vast network of personally identifiable information and confidential information, a whole bunch of different things, maybe. Discussion for another day. And then it was last year, Mr. Pacho spoke on Aspen and blew me away with the, the usage numbers.
Sure.
Which were absolutely staggering. And now that we have embedded some of it in a ratified teacher's contract about how we're changing things, you spoke a little bit about online student registration, scheduling process, and home-to-school communication. Can you speak, or if you have them before you, about usage numbers and how they might have changed from last year to this year?
I don't have the usage numbers with me. I can certainly pull that and send that over. I could, you know, just for, for Aspen Family Portal accounts, we have 2,657 active accounts right now for Family Portal accounts. Certainly growing usage from the teachers with the grading from Google to Aspen. So certainly, if I, if I go pull the numbers, that will be a lot higher this year.
Yeah, I would love to see whatever numbers you have at your convenience. That'd be great to have. Because, you know, Aspen is just an invaluable tool for students to get real-time information and for parents to be aware as well. So I appreciate it. And I think that wraps up my questions.
Ms. Pergos? Thank you. Thank you. So some of my questions had already been asked, the AI and the plan for the Chromebooks. And just to kind of delve a little deeper, maybe just piggyback on Mr. Guttrow's question about them. So we have 8,842 student Chromebooks out there, and those kind of all came at us at one time with COVID. And prior to COVID, we had kind of made the decision that there was, it was, one-to-one devices were not something that we could handle. And now we have one-to-one devices. So I think this is where that conversation is, is well, how could we not have done it then, but now we can? So I would think all 8,842 of those devices would end warranty at the same time. Is that?
Uh, no, that's not true. We bought them in separate batches. So there was maybe about 2,000 at a time that we replaced throughout the past four years.
Okay.
We had about, I want to say just under 2,000 to start before COVID happened, and we bought, went to the one-to-one. So those numbers are a little lower, but they are ending soon, within the next couple of years, the warranties.
Okay. So you think that the 1,600 would get us to a point where we don't have large amounts of laptops that are not under warranty?
Correct. Yes.
Okay. Yeah, and I'd definitely be interested in the funding that you guys are planning for that, or ideas you might have for that, because that's huge, right? A couple other questions I had that, different than that. The self-service registration information. So central registration, I, I know every time we have a meeting, Superintendent Mulvey talks about the number of kids that are in currently processing and registration. I'm assuming that the reason it takes that long is because there's multiple forms to check and medical forms to check. And I'm a little concerned when we automate things that we're going to lose something or we're going to make something more difficult for somebody who's already doing that job now, that things get lost, or there's some communication breakdown sometimes when we automate things and we don't have that human connection. And just because Aspen can do it, I don't know if, can you talk about whether you think that this is the best move for that? Certainly, I'd love to be able to take something off central registrations plate if they're feeling inundated, but can you speak to that as far as how it work with the way central registration's handling them now?
Sure. Yeah, yeah. So, so it's, what it's, at the face value level right now, it's going to help with the data entry part of it. So families can pre-register students by filling out all the forms online, and they sit in a registration bucket until central registration does their review and then processes them. So it takes out, say, I don't know how many boxes of forms that sit at central registration at the beginning of the year that needs to be processed to be digital. And, you know, part of the goal in here is that parents are able to submit documents through the online registration process, just upload documents. It does, is not going to fully replace the person or the data entry on the other side. It just enhances, so for example, you know, penmanship issues that will take time to figure out what, you know, typos, right? This kind of puts that control at the parent level for them to enter it online. And by the time it shows up at central registration as a form, as a PDF form, it's all legible.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. Two other questions. One, for goal number two, on page eight, you talk about schedules and scheduling processes. So I'm a little unsure as to what schedules you mean. Is it just within a building, or is it across buildings? Or is it a district schedule? What, what type of schedules are we talking about there?
So this is within each of the buildings there. So how we have it broken down is we have our high school timeline on how, and what those processes are. And our goal is always to try to make sure that both high schools are in line in those processes. Obviously, both schools have a different flavor in their own way, but those are things that, you know, mentioning class sizes and things like that, that's when we try to address ahead of time, kind of thinking about what were the, what were the class sizes last year to try and project what would happen next year. But as Laura and the superintendent had mentioned, it's tough to kind of gauge where those class sizes will end up. But we try to anticipate as much as we can. So, you know, Ms. Lebo, you mentioned that it's not a one-to-one replacement when a student comes in. So those things like that, we try to anticipate those during our scheduling process.
Okay. I think I misunderstood schedule. You mean the student schedule block?
Yep.
Not the schedule of, you know, when this particular, you know, school is doing this activity versus another school doing, like concerts?
Oh, yes.
So it's more, it's more the scheduling for student scheduling?
That's correct. Yep.
All right. I'm sorry. I didn't, I maybe misunderstood the scheduling there. And my last question was, so historically, QPS emails do not like Yahoo and Gmail emails? Has that situation gotten any better, improved, any movement on any of that?
I believe it's improved. We haven't had many issues this year that I'm aware of.
Okay. I know sometimes when people, parents with Yahoo and Gmail accounts email into QPS and don't hear back, sometimes they're not sure if it has been received. And historically, that was a bigger problem. And you're saying maybe now it's gotten a little bit better?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks. All set. Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Just quickly, I just want to say that technology is a wonderful thing, but the, the increase in cost and personnel that we've had to have since having all this technology and the software, and it's just amazing. I think people, when they think about a school budget, they think about teacher salaries and benefits and retirement, but they don't understand sometimes all the other stuff that we've been able to put into our budget to be able to function at a, at this level. And so I just think it's important for people to understand that this is a very expensive, a very expensive department. You're doing fine, but it is a very expensive department. It does great things. I just wanted to mention that.
I just wanted to say, as far as having the digital central registration, I think that's great because it's, in my opinion, I would think it would be a much more efficient way to collect forms and keep them safe in a place that, you know, they're always there. And then obviously making the content clearer when people are putting in their emails and all that kind of stuff, right? So I think that's good. The only thing I, the only place that I would see maybe there being an issue, and if we have any support for maybe parents or people who aren't, maybe don't have access to the computers, be able to do it, is can they go to central office to be able to do that with someone?
Yes, that, that's still, so this is gonna, this is only gonna be, you know, I understand that there's, you know, the technology skills that may, but so yes, answer is, they, they are still able to go to central registration, go to school and just submit a PDF form that's handwritten, and that can be registered.
Okay, great. Just as long as there's some, you know,
Sure.
Just for people who maybe don't have access. My only other question, and I don't know if I'm reading it correctly, but we did have someone doing all our social media, coordinating all the school websites, the QPS website. Did we replace her, or are we still looking?
Yeah, we're in the final processes of hiring a new candidate.
Okay. Because that was a great turn of events for us last year.
I just interviewed the finalists yesterday.
Oh, good, good. Yeah. Because that was a great, it was a great tool, keeping everybody updated and having somebody manage all that.
Kelly Powers was excellent.
Kelly Powers, yeah.
Process of firing someone, very simple, great answers.
Good. Excellent. Okay. Mr. Guttrow, thank you.
Related to that, so COVID forced our hand. It necessitated historic investments in technology, not just for us, but for everybody, which resulted in a Chromebook in every, in every student's hand in a big way, and really transformed learning and teaching in some ways. So what I'd like to do with the consent at the Chair of Teaching and Learning, and if Laura, if we have to put this on the agenda, is basically to have a future discussion, refer something to teaching and learning that talks about how that technology has changed, both teaching and learning, and how now in the post-COVID world, where we're back in the classroom, and we're still investing in that technology, why that is both useful and important for the teachers and the students in, in learning. So that would, I'd like to add that, if we could, to the next agenda, because it would be useful if, if both the teachers and the students say, this has really facilitated our ability to learn and grow more quickly, then it helps us understand that. So, thank you.
All set? Anyone else? Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. Next on, oh, do we have to accept?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, we have the Early Childhood Program Improvement Plan. Ms. Conley and Ms. Larry, and Dr. Perkins.
I am pleased to present to you the Early Childhood Program Improvement Plan for the 2024-2025 school year. I will be sharing reflections on last year's goals, as well as exciting new plans for the future of our pre-kindergarten program. Our district provides an enriching program for children identified with special, special education needs, as well as typically developing peers. Currently, we have two sites that offer pre-kindergarten classes for the children of Quincy, including Snug Harbor and the Dr. Richter Cristofaro Learning Center. There are currently 323 students enrolled in our program. You can see the enrollment breakdown at each site in Appendix A on page 19. The enrollment number will continue to increase throughout the school year as students are referred to us for screenings and evaluations, and it is determined that the child is in need of services. You can see in the goal reflection, beginning on page nine, during the 2023-2024 school year, the pre-kindergarten team continued to work on building students' early literacy skills through additional research-based curriculum resources. They receive materials for the Hand-to-Mind Program, which is a curriculum resource that provides hands-on learning activities to develop early phonological and phonemic awareness skills. The integrated pre-K team incorporated these strategies into their instruction, along with the other early literacy tools in which they have previously had training, including Hagerty and Lively Letters. Also on page nine, the integrated and cares pre-kindergarten teams participated in training on the new state-mandated IEP form, which is required to be implemented during the 2024-2025 school year. The team attended three district-run trainings, focusing on familiarizing themselves with the new layout, learning how and where to enter IEP information in Aspen, and transferring IEP information for a sample student from the old format to the new format. When drafting the action steps last fall, our initial goal was to start using the form in the spring of 2024. The state delayed the required implementation date to November 2024 to allow more time for training. At this time, the pre-kindergarten staff is using the new IEP form for initial evaluations, reevaluations, and annual review meetings. The team participated in additional training and troubleshooting during this afternoon's PD session, and support will continue to be available throughout the school year. On page 10, the integrated pre-kindergarten On page 10, the integrated pre-kindergarten teachers attended training on pivotal response treatment, or PRT, which is a naturalistic intervention model derived from Applied Behavior Analysis, or ABA. PRT focuses on pivotal areas of a child's development, such as motivation, responsiveness to multiple cues, self-management, and social initiations. The staff learned a variety of motivational strategies to promote student engagement in individual, small group, and whole group activities. They selected three strategies to utilize with their students and tracked data on student progress. Use of PRT strategies to support student engagement and classroom activities will continue to be a focus during this school year. The Early Childhood Goals for the 2024-2025 school year begin on page 12. Goal number one expands upon training regarding the new IEP format. A primary focus of the new format is on tracking student progress using SMART goals and data collection. The pre-kindergarten teachers will attend training regarding data collection strategies over the course of the school year. Samples of data collection tools will be provided, and teachers will be supported to develop data collection tools in ways that are most efficient and effective for them to utilize in a busy classroom. Data collection tools will be customized to each student's IEP goals, so progress toward their goals can be easily tracked and reported. On page 13, goal number two focuses on an exciting new opportunity for our pre-kindergarten program. In the spring of 2024, Quincy Public Schools applied for and was awarded the Commonwealth Preschool Partnership Initiative, or CPPI, grant. The purpose of the CPPI grant is to develop and implement programs in at least one of the following priority areas: expanding access to affordable quality preschool, building locally-aligned high-quality preschool curricula, and providing equitable access for all students, both with and without disabilities. Additional details regarding these three priority areas are included in Appendix C on page 22. During the spring and summer of 2024, the grant money was used for early planning stages, such as establishing community partnerships and developing a leadership team. The QPS leadership team consists of myself, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Erin Perkins, Director of Curriculum Michael Marani, and Coordinator of Data and Assessment Christopher Tierney. We have also partnered with community-based childcare providers in Quincy, including QCAP Head Start, Stars, Boston Chinatown Neighborhood Center, and Wallaston Childcare. The CPPI grant has been renewed for the 2024-2025 school year. Our focus this year is on conducting a needs assessment and developing a strategic action plan. We partnered with an independent consultant to assist with the needs assessment, which will identify barriers to access to either no- or low-cost six-hour-per-day programs for preschool-aged children. A list of the questions we are looking to answer through the needs assessment is included in Appendix D on page 24. Once the needs assessment is completed, the leadership team will use the data collected to develop a cost modeling of the planned expansion of quality preschool classrooms, either within the district or in local EEC licensed programs, as well as a strategic action plan that articulates the implementation steps and who is responsible for each step. One area of need that we have already identified is the number of students enrolled in community-based childcare centers who are eligible for special education services. As part of our 2024-2025 grant award, we have hired a speech-language pathologist to travel to our partner childcare centers, so that students can receive necessary services in their current pre-kindergarten programs. This allows students to receive intervention in their daily environment, reduces the number of transitions students make throughout the day to receive services, and reduces the burden of transportation on families attempting to bring their children to multiple providers during the day. The SLP can also conduct evaluations in the childcare centers and provide childcare providers with suggestions and strategies to support speech and language development. QPS could be eligible for additional funding through an implementation grant during the 2025-2026 school year. A flow chart of the phases of implementation of the CPPI grant over the three-year period is included in Appendix C on page 23. On page 14, goal number three builds upon the pivotal response training professional development that was provided to the pre-kindergarten teachers during the 2023-2024 school year. During the 2024-2025 school year, the pre-kindergarten paraprofessionals will be participating in professional development provided by the staff from Selshore Autism Center. Training will focus on the use of PRT strategies and data collection. Throughout the school year, the paraprofessionals will implement strategies in the classroom with support from the classroom teachers. The paraprofessionals will also be trained on how to collect data regarding specific skills, which the teachers will then interpret and include in their progress reports. The Early Childhood Education Team is proud of the work we have done to support our district's youngest learners. We're looking forward to partnering with our community-based programs to expand access to quality pre-kindergarten experiences to prepare students for success in kindergarten. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you very much for this. This was great. I had a bunch of questions, and honestly, the goals looked, looked great. It looked like we're continuing a lot and expanding a lot of the goals, so definitely good work there. I'm excited to see the progress on those. But I had, mostly my questions kind of focused on page 21. We had talked a lot about caseload versus workload with our, with our therapists and our specialists, and I was just kind of, I thought this might be a good opportunity to just kind of talk about that in action here, 'cause when we talked about it last time, it was more in a general sense, and we kind of have the numbers here. So I just kind of wanted to get your thoughts on this. So my understanding is, so kiddos come into pre-K when they turn 36 months, right? So as soon as they turn three, they're eligible. So it's not, pre-K classes are never set numbers kind of in September, they're growing throughout the year, right? So these caseloads that we have here are like starting caseloads, right? So are we expecting that those cases will get higher throughout the year? Or is there a plan, are we planning to add more staff to account for that, or do the caseloads just get bigger? And that, that is the plan?
Yeah, so the caseloads do get bigger over the course of the school year. These are numbers from about a week or two ago. I, I had them all send me their current numbers. We had an additional speech assistant, a second one, at the RDLC, who resigned about two weeks into the school year. So we've actually hired someone to fill that position. They haven't started yet, so that's an additional speech staff that will help with that number. Again, with the speech caseloads in particular, like I said, we've hired that additional speech pathologist to go out to the community-based centers, and she can also, while we're building that program, assist with these caseloads with our students and our schools as well. And then with the hope that maybe some of those students don't have to come into our program, so they'll be the responsibility of that SLP as she goes out to their program. So that should help specifically with the speech caseloads for this year.
Okay. And this is just referring to the number of kiddos, right? Not the amount of times that they're seeing kids?
Correct.
Okay. And are we tracking that as well? Is that pretty even as well? I mean, these here, for, for instance, in the RDLC, the top four there look like they're a pretty similar number of kiddos, but I assume that they're probably similar number of times that they're seen as well?
Yeah, for speech, the majority of the students are twice a week, sometimes once, some students have three. For OT, the majority of students are once a week, sometimes they have twice. It kind of depends on each student's needs. But generally, when I reach out to the therapist to get some information about their caseloads, they tend to also share information about how many times a week they see students, or the number of students they have in the CARES program that may have more intensive needs than the students in the integrated program. So they're very good about keeping me up to date on kind of what the workload piece of there. That's really hard to reflect in a chart like this. But generally, when I ask them for information, they tend to update me on those pieces as well. And how many evaluations they've conducted is a big part of their job as well, 'cause it's a lot of time-consuming writing and...
Right, and those evaluations also occur kind of throughout the year as well, right? How, how many evaluations over the course of a year do we typically see?
We usually do over 200.
Okay. And it's looking like we have maybe 19 now?
So 19, at the time when Gillian sent me her 19 evaluations, so those are just integrated, potential integrated pre-K students who were referred for speech and language testing. So it doesn't include students who were screened by the classroom teachers, who maybe weren't referred on for additional testing, but I do have the spreadsheet that they use to track their testing, so I can look up and see how many they've done so far this year.
Okay, yeah, I mean, it would just be great, I would, I think I've expressed this before, I think it would be great to do kind of like monthly check-ins with them, just to make sure, because it is so hard to quantify a number with, with these, with staff members, just that if we can kind of do maybe a monthly check-in with them and just kind of make sure that they're feeling like it's not too much, or they're not overwhelmed, just to make sure that we're, you know, the kiddos are getting the best and, and we're not over, overloading and overworking these staff members. 'Cause I think because of that, we can't quantify the numbers so much. So I'd love to be able to keep track of that if, if possible. And then, last question, oh, do, these staff members, they're just focused on these buildings, right? None of these staff members are working on any programs at, like Broad Meadows or anything like that?
The only ones who are are the physical therapists.
Okay.
So you can see their numbers, like Rachel Thomas only sees four students in the pre-K at RDLC, Kathleen only sees two students at Snug Harbor. So the physical therapists do go to other buildings, just because the numbers of students who receive PT in the district are significantly smaller than OT and speech. But all the rest of them are focused in those buildings.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thanks.
I have one question. Erin, we talked about this at the goals meeting too, about in 2031, we are going to have to have preschool, is that true?
Well, they haven't said that we'll have to have universal pre-K yet, but that's what they're certainly building towards.
And is that for three and four-year-olds?
I believe it's for four-year-olds right now.
And it's for four-year-olds with and without, students without disability?
Correct.
So it's all the four-year-olds in the city we would have to be?
Potentially, yes.
Potentially, we have to find someplace to...
Potentially.
Yeah.
I mean, but the, the thing, I think the thing that we're interested in also is the idea of like partnering with some of these community agencies, so that, you know, we wouldn't, it wouldn't be necessarily Quincy Public Schools that would own all of it. You know, there might be, we might be offering half-day programs and a community provider provides the rest, you know, things like that. But I think that part of it, which was, was kind of a new idea for us, was that idea of also when we're doing this, like looking at aligning curriculum with other community-based providers, which I actually think is a pretty exciting idea. So if we can get people like Head Start, who's amazing, Ketha Reichel is amazing, and, you know, the Wallaston Childcare, or Campus Kinda House, or all of these different programs that provide preschool programs to our students, get them, their staff all together, and we all do professional development together, and we all use the same or very similar curriculum. Just imagine how much better prepared our four-year-olds would be when they, it was time for them to enter kindergarten.
Yeah, and it's, the grant is such a great opportunity to get that work done.
It really is.
But how many, you probably don't know the exact number, but what percentage, you say, of our kindergartners have had preschool experiences?
Oh, we do know that, it's about 85%. We actually pulled that, I can get that for you, with Christopher's on our team, and so he pulled all that information for us. And what we're looking at now is a comparison between the kids who have had some type of preschool experience and their like fall dibble scores. So we looked at, so we're digging into that right now.
Nice.
But we looked at last year's pre-K, it was about 85%. Now, there's variation within that, because someone could have attended a preschool program for less than 20 hours, some kids attended a full day.
Home preschool too, right?
Yeah, and it could be a home, yep. But about 85% of our kids had something. The rest had nothing.
Yeah.
So, and that's the group, you know, that's the group that we're really concerned with, obviously.
That's great data to have. I have another question, this is just a bizarre question on page 20. I just don't know, in the second column on page 20, what is, I know what an IEP is, I know what the, the typically developing students are, but what is a service plan? Is that a 504?
Kind of like a 504. They're not on a 504 in preschool, but they come in for like speech, articulation is a big one. Jen can talk to you all about articulation, but they, so they'll, they would, they come in for, maybe they just have like one service or something kind of not as, you know, they don't need as much assistance.
And my last question was about the pivotal response treatment, and you did explain some of it a little better to me, but I don't know if you have something we could read about that, 'cause it's intrigues me.
Yeah, it's, it's really, it's a great program.
And I'd love to see if we could, at the end of this year, do an evaluation, or maybe even an exit ticket for the people who are trying it out this year.
Yeah, yeah.
Just see what they think, if they think it's working. And there would, should be data about that, because less referrals and so.
Yeah, absolutely. And I think the great thing about that is that we're also, what I loved about Jen's goal, you know, and what, what these guys have done, and I do want to say that Carrie Conley, the principal of the RDLC, is back here and a huge part of our pre-K program, but, you know, that we're, that the, one of those goals, and I don't think we've done this in our Early Childhood Improvement Plan in the past, is for paraprofessionals.
I saw that.
And I think that that is such an impressive thing to focus on, and such a great shift for our district to really be working to have really well-trained paraprofessionals in our programs.
Thank you very much, this is wonderful.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, thank you so much. Exciting stuff, yep. Next on our agenda is the school nurse appointment. Superintendent?
Before you, is the resume of Bridgette LeBlanc Nims. We are asking for your vote to approve, Ms. Nims, to be a resource nurse that will fill in where needed throughout the district. Roll call. And this is, roll call.
Question, do we, do we have many applicants for this?
Do we have many applicants?
Yeah.
We have applicants, but not applicants that meet the requirement of state licensure.
Gotcha, okay.
The applicants that do apply, we wrote, we basically asked them to roll into our sub-list and work towards getting their licensure, so we build up that sub-list to get licensed nurses moving forward. So it's kind of a fetus system that we use.
It kind of strikes me a little funny, 'cause a nurse is out in the private sector making big money, and the extra steps they have to go through, it seems absurd to me what the state requirements are, but at any rate, make a motion to approve.
Andrea Hewitt does a great job with regards to managing that pipeline to full licensed nurses and allows us to hire highly qualified nurses for that purpose.
Mrs. Lebo?
I just wanted to say one thing, that's true of the vocational teachers too, what they have to go through to get their permanent license, when they are making $140,000 as a plumber, or a nurse, you know, it's, it's just crazy. Yes, it can be a little crazy, but...
Okay, so we had a motion by the mayor, second by Mrs. Hughley, roll call vote.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Hughley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Perdius?
Yes.
And Mayeko?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have a roll call vote for the consent agenda. Superintendent?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Roll call, Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Hughley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lebo?
Yes.
Mrs. Perdius?
Yes.
And Mayeko?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, there is no additional business communications. We have upcoming school committee meeting, the regular meetings on October 23rd, November 13th, and December 11th at 6:30 PM. Subcommittee meeting, quarterly budget and finance, October 23rd at 6:15 PM. Reports of subcommittees are none, and I think we need a motion to go into executive session.
Make a motion, we're going to executive session for the purposes of contractual discussions, and we will not be returning to regular session.
Meeting adjourned.
Roll call.
No, roll call, yep.
Mr. Begoli?
Yes.
Mrs. Cahill?
Yes.
Mr. Guttrow?
Yes.
Mrs. Hughley?